Where is everybody?
This could end up being very quick.
Okay, coming on now. There's Tristan.
Good evening.
Hi there. So we'll give Diane and couple more minutes here. Oh, and yeah.
It would be good to get a third to solidify the quorum since I'm a I'm a come and go kind of person tonight being at work.
Okay. I assume we haven't heard any anything. Any absentees tonight, Trevor?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I spoke to Diane earlier. She said she would be here.
Okay, thank you. Here comes Tom. Are you there, Tom?
Yeah, hi. Working on it. There we go.
Okay, all right. So that gives us a solid form. Why don't we go ahead and begin and we'll pick up Diane when she logs on. So let's begin tonight. This is the normally scheduled meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. We have first thing on our agenda is a roll call.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Hakinen.
Here.
Commissioner Cole.
Here.
Commissioner Stockness.
Here on the phone. I can't get on tonight. There's a whole new code to get on with, you know, 25 numbers and and letters.
Where's the calendar?
So we can't get the city calendar to get on.
Diane, I had to go to the email.
Oh, and then the email led us on?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a link in the in the email I sent on Friday.
Okay, well, I don't have email. So anyway, my my husband does all. We'll try that. Okay, but I am here.
And then Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from last month, January 15th. Is there any comments, questions, clarifications, etc., for the minutes? Okay, I have just one clarification. I would. It's not a big deal, but I just want to clarify it, and that's on page five of eight. At the middle of the page there, there is a sentence that says in relation to 3.3.3 on page 16, Johnson noted that HDA is purchasing hydrogen fuel buses, not electric. It's not a big deal, but I just wanted to clarify that, yes, they are purchasing hydrogen fuel buses, but they also have purchased hybrid and electric buses as well. So it's not that that they're not buying electric. They are buying a lot of different different types of vehicles. Any other comments, questions, considerations for the minutes?
On page five of eight, also, I saw that you you were speaking about Mill Creek in regards to hydro. And maybe this isn't the time to talk about it, but and I saw the meeting from last time. Mill Creek, I reached out to RCA and it just doesn't seem to be getting the attention that it they're not interested in it. It's too small. I think that it's they're going to get more from solar.
I have a government.
So that's that's my input in regards to Mill Creek. But didn't look into it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
All approve. All motion to approve.
Okay, approved. Here, a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes, signified by raising your hand?
Aye.
Or aye? Okay, thank you. The the minutes are approved.
Okay, so I need I need Anton to send me the link because it's not on my email. There's no notice at all for me.
You're looking at your Trinidad, City of Trinidad email?
No, I don't know what that is.
I sent it to both.
Okay.
Well, I didn't. I didn't. I didn't get it. What is my City of Trinidad email? I don't really use it. Okay, I'm gonna have to write it down.
Diane, is there another email you want one of us to forward it to for you?
Yeah, at Diane stockness@gmail.com. I told him I don't want to use the government email.
No, I see Trevor sent it to you on the 15th, but yeah, we can forward it again here.
Yeah, I never got it. So I went through all my emails, you know, from the beginning of July. So it's Diane stockness@gmail.com.
Okay, I just sent it again from my city email, so hopefully you should get it.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We have
Moving.
We're on.
We have four items for discussion, decision, and action this evening. Are there any questions, comments, changes to the agenda?
No, I moved to approve it as published.
Here, a second.
Second.
Move the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the agenda, signified by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Approval of the agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is items from the floor. This is an opportunity for any members of the public who would like to address the planning commission can do so at this time. We ask that you limit your discussion to three minutes. Are there any comments from the floor or the public?
Yeah, can I? I have a question that I'm not sure if it's better addressed to the planning commission or the city council, but I was curious with regard to billing of City of Trinidad water. If there was any way we could move to a quarterly billing cycle rather than a monthly billing cycle? And who would I address for that? Anyone knows?
Well, probably the logic. Well, the person comes to mind, of course, you could start the conversation with Gabe. And then perhaps talk to Eli about city manager. And I believe that it's probably in the preview purview of the city council, so that's probably a discussion item for the city council. But yeah, I can understand what you're what you're looking for.
Sure.
You might even talk to Kyle and Ross because they are the ones that read the meters every month.
Right.
And they're out and about, you know, during the day.
Right. Okay, yeah, I'll take it up with with Gabe or whoever I can track down.
Okay, moving on. Our first item on the for discussion decision is the meeting format preference, discussion regarding returning to in-person hybrid meetings. Trev, you want to give us Travis, you want to give us a little filling in here, please?
Sure. So as you know, the the city council has moved to hybrid meetings, so the city is set up with the technology to be able to do that, and it has for the most part worked fairly well. As I mentioned, the memo, it takes a little bit of of extra staff time. You have to have someone kind of manning the computer and changing the camera. Which is and then taking notes and and so that person can't also be presenting. So but yeah, no, I think that it's a definite possibility. I don't think it requires the city council hasn't provided any direction, and I don't think it requires city council approval if the planning commission wants to move to a hybrid meeting format. One thing I thought I'd add to this report is that at the last meeting or the meeting before, we also talked about having some like workshop style meetings in between. And I think that we're going to want to do that even even tonight's agenda is pretty long. And so, you know, an option would be to schedule a special meeting instead of, you know, having this one go long, depending on how you're feeling. And I do think that for for the special meetings, we don't, we we use those. We do a workshop format, so it's more informal. And that is for kind of ongoing projects like the general plan, things that aren't going to be big major decisions, things that aren't going to be controversial and things where that's not going to be the only hearing for it. So again, sort of on ongoing things. So we're going to be having a lot of those coming up with the finishing the the general plan update and the zoning ordinance update and those kind of things. And those meetings, we would probably just have in-person in our workshop format and not not bother with the hybrid meetings for those. So or we would do all Zoom. So we would we would do. We wouldn't do a hybrid. We'd do one or the other for for those meetings. So so just adding that. So I'll leave it to you guys to discuss how you want to proceed.
Thank you. Diane.
I I want to go back to in-person meetings in the town hall. I want to see if we can get more community involvement. We've had 32 Zoom meetings. I'm not real techie. And I just think this is a it's a healthier situation if we go back to meeting in in the town hall. I'm thinking that we're going to get some more participants. Everybody seems to be interested in what's going on, and then we can hear. We're not going to just have eight people.
Is it your
on the phone. Talking and logging on, it's the same one. So I am ready to make a motion to go back. Thank you.
Let me just clarify. Diane, are you suggesting that we not do a hybrid meeting? As the city council has agreed to do, or are you just referring to having just a a face-to-face meeting with no with no ability to log in?
No, I I think the hybrid is fine, but us as commissioners, I would like to see all of us there. The exchange of ideas, the chairman getting each of us to talk seems to be working out, worked out well. A lot of times after the meeting, something comes up and we go, oh, Trevor, this or oh, Richard, you know, just think about this, or you might say, hey, Aaron, how's your daughter? You know, it's just more personal. And I think right now communities need that. We don't need to sit home in our sweats and Zoom. Okay, so I'm I'm ready to go. And I talked to Anton. And I said, you know, I know it's a lot to do because I used to help. Richard and I would help Angela put away the chairs and unplug this and that. And so we would have to kind of work on some of that. We might even get a volunteer in the community that wants to help wrap up the speakers and cords and mics. Okay, guys, I'm done.
Okay, any other Tristan?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything Diane said. I think it will make for a probably a better experience, certainly a lot more less frustrating experience in terms of people communicating, and I'm ready to move back to a hybrid setting, I guess.
I'll do. Obviously, hybrid is a is a wonderful fit for me personally, given my work schedule. But that being said, I agree, the in-person is an important piece to get back to and just looking around at other agencies and cities and jurisdictions, this this hybrid format, I think, is only going to become more ingrained in our society as we move forward. So I think that's definitely a wise approach.
I would. I agree, except for one thing. I'm just wondering if we might not want to wait a little bit because I tested positive today. And it is everywhere. So just throwing that out.
Thank you, and I hope you're feeling okay. I guess my feeling is I I like the idea of the hybrid. I do think, though, that it's perhaps a little premature right now, just based on what Tom just said, as well as some other indications in the community. My wife's in the health business, healthcare business, and I don't think they've had a complete set of staff for the last two months. There's always somebody out with COVID. So I certainly believe it's something that we should strive for, but maybe not right now. But I did have a couple of other just comments on it. One is it's interesting, you know, and Diane, your 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 comments about trying to get the public more involved, I think is absolutely a good idea, but it's been kind of interesting from the city council perspective that the public has remained at home and have been zooming in to the hybrid meeting. So I don't know how long that will happen, but that's that's an artifact of the hybrid setup, I'm sure. The other thing I just wanted to make sure, and it sounds like maybe it's not a big deal, but I just wanted to make sure that you know, we we have the sufficient resources in staff to be able to do the setup and teardown and all the logistics that are involved in it. And I hope that we've accounted for that additional effort, you know, in the in the new fiscal year budget. And and so those are my comments. I'm I'm willing to do it, but I think it might be a little early for for actually meeting face-to-face. But let's see, we were just asked, we were just going to make a recommendation. So Trevor, I don't think we need a vote or anything on this, do we?
Well, I I guess consensus would be what I was looking for. On this.
How about this is suggestion? Can we? And I hate to not make a decision, but if we do defer, decide to wait, can we put a timeline on it to revisit it? Because a couple of things from my perspective from the healthcare side, this is not going to go away COVID anytime soon. I think this is going to be part of our life and folks testing positive and whatnot. So we need to be aware of that. And I I don't know, I just feel like we need to be cautious if that's our benchmark because we thought we were out of it several times. Now it keeps cropping up again. And the beauty of the hybrid is that should one of us or member of the public be positive, there's still a way for them to be engaged and participate. You know, assuming they're they're healthy enough to do so. So I on the flip side, though, I'm also okay with. I believe city council has done this one time or two times now. And so it might be worth us kind of going to school on their efforts, so to speak, and let them work out the bugs and the kinks and city staff kind of come up with their process. And then just kind of add us to the roster. So that we kind of my thought if we didn't want to do it today to pick a date in the future to kind of have a target, otherwise I fear that'll just kind of go on.
Good comment.
Yeah, I feel like certainly is. It's an easy one to kick the can down the road. I but I think that, like Aaron said, the beauty of the hybrid model is if you're not feeling comfortable with coming, or if you are sick, you can opt out and stay at home and still participate. So I feel like it just gives like that's maybe the most flexible option that we have is to move to a hybrid setting.
So can we put wear a mask on the door? We can't. I don't know if we can ask for COVID passes. I I don't know what you know, what what we can do. And I had asked E Anton to ask Eli to come. And this is the second meeting. He hasn't been here. So maybe maybe I'll just talk to Eli about that, Richard, and ask him, you know, what what are or maybe Richard, you know what some of the health health rules are. I don't want to put it off too long. I've only got six more meetings and I'm done. So I want to go back. And the community engaged.
I understand entirely. Aaron.
I did just have one other question for I guess Trevor. On the council meetings that have happened virtually, has there been a mix of council members, both hybrid and in-person? Are they all been in-person? I'm just curious about the logistics of that.
They've mostly been in person, except I believe one or two were joined from out of town.
Okay, so we've tested. Okay, proof of concept. Good. Okay.
Yeah, I think Cheryl was on a extended vacation. And I think she had to sign in or log in remotely. So I I think we can work it out. I I just worry just a little bit, you know, I appreciate the fact that if you're not feeling well or do have COVID, that you could you could log in remotely. But that doesn't mean that people who are physically there could not be at risk. So but I I let me let me suggest this. I will. I will contact Eli and talk to him about the protocols that they are using and and I can report back at the next meeting. And at the next meeting, we can make a decision if if everything looks reasonable. And we believe that we have the right protocols in place and the technology is still working well for us. Then let's let's make that decision then. But I just want to get a feedback from Eli to see how it's working out for them for the city council.
Commissioner Johnson, are there certain protocols that you're concerned about?
Yeah, I don't want people to get COVID.
I guess Anton specifically, I guess, listening to Diane, are requirements, can people be required to mask? What are masking requirements, vaccination? What what is the city able to require or request proof of? At the end of the day, also, as commissioners, we can wear masks to protect ourselves. If we wear our N95s that are fitted, then that's protective for us. That's what I do on every patient contact I have here. So there are things that we could do for ourselves, but those would be kind of my thoughts on things to find out. We haven't required that of any of the if anybody at any of the meetings so far. But if there was another surge of COVID, we probably would, just as we were requiring masks in the office. But I can't. I can't speak for for Eli.
Well, okay. I I don't mean to be flippant when I when my last comment, but I do want to protect not only ourselves, but also the public. So maybe Anton, I can get together with you. And 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 I can also just make sure that Eli is on board and we can. We'll make a decision.
That sounds good.
Is that fair enough for everyone? Notting of heads? Thumbs up?
Thumbs down. So we're gonna at least we'll come back to this the next meeting and make a a more informed decision next meeting and each of us, if we have individual concerns or ideas, we can research those and come back with them. Is that fair?
Fair enough to me. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is is should know by now, design review standards, discussion of the new draft, design review standards for development in Trinidad. Trevor?
So, yeah, so I made the changes that we discussed at the last meeting. Mostly involves some minor points of clarification, reorganization. In doing so and going through a last time looking at organization, I did notice that some topics had sentences, sort of criteria that weren't part of the numbering system. They were within sentences afterwards. So that included let's see, A, B, and G, C, and G. So I made those all part of the criteria. I just wanted to point that out, make sure everybody was okay with that. And just to say that the last few sets of edits have been pretty minimal. And that I think this is probably close to being done. The the next step, the biggest issue I think left is is how do we treat private versus public views? So that's a conversation I need to have with coastal commission staff. In terms of the the process moving forward, the definitions would continue to be working definitions. They would not be part of the amendment unless we unless there are certain specific ones we need for the design review, which there are probably a few. design review, which there are probably a few, um, and we could pull, pick those out. Um, if you have any suggestions for things that need to be in there, I can also pick them out. Um, so this, I think this would, could easily be a standalone LCP amendment. Um, it just modifies that chapter. It doesn't depend on any other sections or chapters really. Um, but then that is, you know, to put together an amendment, I just submitted the STR ordinance amendment to the coastal commission today. Um, there's ten, ten different attachments that have to go with that. Um, all the, the meeting minutes, all the staff reports, um, you know, and analysis of how it affects general plan policies, how it affects coastal commission policy. So it is, it is a bit of work to, to put together an LCP amendment. Um, but I, these are criteria that the planning commission has, has wanted to amend for a long time. So, um, so you have two options. One would be to, once we get comments back from coastal commission staff, we could adopt this and submit it as a standalone amendment. Or we could, um, set it aside and until we do the larger zoning ordinance amendment. Which will be by the end of twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
At lea, at least according to our LCP grant.
Thank you. I just wanted to get one clarification on what you just said, Trevor. It wasn't clear to me in your staff report, uh, about the issue of the city having to pay for the amendment. Uh, I didn't quite understand what, what you meant by that.
So this isn't, um, I don't think this falls under, specifically falls under any of the tasks, um, that are currently grant funded. So it would be a, a city general fund cost to process this amendment at this point. Where if we waited until we have the whole zoning ordinance update, it could be included as part of that, which would be funded by the LCP grant.
I see. Okay, thank you.
How much money are we talking about?
You know, probably in the two to three thousand, well, yeah, probably, probably more in the five thousand dollar range by the time responding to you all the coastal commission comments. Um, I, I have included some of this time. This, this, this did, I did start this under one of the grant tasks, which was to come up with objective design standards that would help streamline the approval process. But these don't fall in the category of objective design standards. There's still discretion. Um, your decision, um, in, involved in these design standards. So I, I think they don't fall under that grant funding, but some of this process has been grant funded. But now, now I think it's falling outside of those, you know, what, what we said we'd do under the grant. And so I've, I've switched it over to city planning fund.
Having, having said that, um, is that something that we should, um, ask the city council what their choice would be since they basically funded?
I think that would not be a bad idea, but I think, um, you know, it could be a recommendation as opposed to just asking.
Okay.
I guess the other question I have is if we did, um, you know, like you say, recommended the council to process an amendment in the near term, that would take a chunk out of our tasks that are due by twenty twenty five in theory, right? So we'd be actually accomplishing something that we could park and not revisit as we come to the rest of that.
Yeah, and it would actually give you an opportunity to test these criteria. And then if you want to modify them as part of that larger update, then you'd have some, some, you know, experience with them, um, on which to base that.
The coastal commission kind of telegraphing what their feelings are, right? Is that what you're getting at?
No, I mean, just with, with you guys making decisions on projects.
Okay.
Any other comments on the staff report? Diane? You're on mute.
Like I said, I'm not real techie. So we need to make a recommendation and get what we can done, like Aaron said, not wait to finish the, um, comprehensive zoning ordinance, because none of us will be on the council by then, I mean, on the planning commission. We've already batted this around for, um, I don't know how many years, Trevor. And then Trevor, try to get the coastal commission up here because they work from, um, afar and they have their own ideas about what, what's going on. Because they need to see the private and the public views, because it's different from other coastal areas, because we are such a small town. That we need to get done. So we should, we should, um, five thousand dollars is what the grant is. And listen, the city is flush. They've got money now. They've got a reserve, so let's go get it. And, um, make a recommendation to the council. Okay, Richard, I'm done.
Thank you. Good comments. Any other comments on the staff report? Okay, I, you did ask us one other question, which is at the end of the first paragraph of the staff report. And you asked, um, that, um, are these topics in the appropriate order? And, uh, I don't know if, um, uh, anyone had any comments on that. Um, I, I thought, uh, just briefly that, um, uh, I, and, and this is, this is, uh, a very, you know, it doesn't have to happen or not, or anything. But I just thought that just trying to group some of the ones that had to do with specifics of, uh, buildings made sense to maybe collect together. Um, and so rather than, without going through all of the, the details, I just thought that maybe we should, um, make H and I and J, uh, uh, together with, uh, E. And, and so have H, I and J come after E. And then, um, I kind of looked at item C, the, uh, design standard C, cultural resources. And I thought that, um, was pretty important. And, um, and it's only one sentence anyway, but, uh, I thought that maybe that should move to the front. But I'm, I'm not hard over on any of that, but it just felt like maybe we could group some of those and, uh, in kind of a, um, commonality type of, uh, arrangement. Um, so that, that, those are my comments on your request there. Anyone else have any comments or questions on the staff report? Tom?
Um, yeah, I, I was gonna comment on that also. I thought, I thought moving it up, it shows respect. And, uh, moving the cultural up to that is first thing you read would be a, a good thing. Other, other than that, yeah. Okay, thanks.
So, um, we have been through this a number of times. And, um, our usual process is to go page by page.
Hey, Richard, I'm sorry. It looks like Tristan has his hand up and I do as well.
I'm sorry. I, I put my eye off the screen.
Virtual hands.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Tristan. You're on mute?
Excuse me, um, yeah, I, I think that's, that's good to, the order that you were talking about. I do have, I wanted to talk about, um, section A, site planning, um, and I feel like maybe you were just about to go into this. But, um, on page two, I, I guess my hang up with that one is I feel like a lot of the points in there are rather repetitive with the more, um, more detailed sections later, such as number three, four and six. Um, and I would, I, I guess I think maybe we could just get rid of that site planning section altogether and incorporate it into the more specific, um, categories. Um, like, number two, I think could just be added into the grading section. And, um, number one, I didn't, I couldn't quite find a good home for that or number five. But I thought number three, four and six are just, um, are, are, are discussed in greater detail and in different sections.
Okay, yeah, well, um, I was just about to say that there are normal processes we go through page by page. And I think we can go through this fairly quickly, but, uh, well, yes, your comments will, will pick up. Yeah. Uh, Aaron, you had your hand up?
No, I'm good now, thanks.
Okay. Diane, did you have your hand up?
I did. Okay, so, um, Tristan, I disagree with you. Because planning is all about the site. So that needs to be where we start. We start with the site, then we go to the grading, the style, the building. I think Trevor did a great job outlining this, and she's been a planner for quite a while. And then we, you know, the last one is, uh, I mean, the next one is views, roofs, materials, colors. But we, we have to talk about, um, the site. Where we're gonna put whatever we're gonna put, whether it's a new building, an ADU, um, you know, commercial. So I think the cultural resource sources idea from Tom and your others is a good idea. Because, um, you know, the heritage of Trinidad is really important, especially this day and age. Talking about where and who was here first. So I agree, I agree with that, but I definitely think, um, you know, the site planning needs to be there. Thank you.
Okay, um, thanks for the comments. Uh, as I have said already, um, we typically just go through this page by page, and I think we can get through it very quickly. I don't think that there should be too much on most of these pages, and so we can just walk right through it if everybody agrees. And, um, so we'll start with page one. Any questions or comments on page one? Two. And Tristan, I hear what you're saying. And, um, I, I, I think Diane, what I think Tristan was trying to say is that, um, I don't think that we're neglecting site planning or not talking about it. But, um, what we're doing is there may be some of these which are already covered in other, um, under other standards. So I don't think we were just getting rid of them as much as it was just to see whether or not they were, uh, included elsewhere. Is that what you're trying to say, Tr- Tristan?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I hear what Diane's saying. I mean, site planning is like a very important part, and so that's where you want to start. Um, and I think it's an important section. I just, I guess I just thought that a lot of those, um, or half of those points are, are, are discussed in greater detail later in the document. And either, but maybe it's fine. Maybe that's just like, it's good to just introduce those topics there and then discuss them in greater detail later. Um, but, or, or, um, or we could do away with them and they'll, they'll still be covered in the document later. Um, so I'm not, like, beholden to deleting them from that section.
Okay. Aaron?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like Tristan's idea of trying to clean this up, but I guess I had a question for Trevor. Is it, from your perspective as a planner, is it worth having that in there? Because I agree with Tristan, a lot of those things are absolutely very well covered later on in the document. And site planning is of course critical to any development, but, I mean, we talk about all these things later. So I guess what's kind of your take as the, the enforcer of these tools or interpreter of these tools?
Yeah, I mean, my, my first, um, my first reaction was, was, was more, I think, what Diane was saying in terms of, you know, it's kind of your first crack at, it's sort of the big, big picture of it. Um, uh, but I, I don't think it's absolutely necessary. I, you know, I, I think most of those things are covered in other sections. Um, it doesn't necessarily hurt to repeat things, but, um, you know, we, we don't want to overcomplicate the process. Um, potentially I could, the, the grading section could be like grading and hydrologic modification or something and might pick up the vegetation and, um, well, I wouldn't pick up five. But yeah, um, I, I don't have strong feelings. I, I think, you know, um, think about going through these and discussing them and, and, you know, it might make sense to sort of discuss the site overall as sort of the first, first thing you talk about with a project, but, but, uh, yeah, and I, I don't have a strong recommendation either, either way.
Um, all right, I mean, I guess, uh, I'm, I'm fine with leaving him in there. I think that's all right. There's certainly good things to consider when site planning, so.
Yeah, we may find that as we actually use this document, hopefully soon, rather than later, that, uh, we'll either be able to take advantage of the way it's written now, or maybe we'll try to, maybe we make a suggestion to change it. But, uh, having said, or having heard all the comments, I think let's just leave it alone for right now and we'll go from there. Any other comments on two? Three? Four? Five? Six? Seven? And eight?
I had a comment on four.
Okay.
It's a Trevor. So, um, have you talked to the commission, the coastal commission about private and public views?
Now, that, that I think is, is the next step, and that's, yeah, I'm gonna have to arrange probably a a meeting with them to, to discuss that, because it's a.
Can, can we be there? Can that be like a workshop?
I could ask them if they could attend a, a special planning commission meeting to discuss that. Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just, just for clarification, Trevor, you deal with the local staff, is that correct?
Yeah, so I, I try and in my staff reports, make sure I say coastal commission staff. And, but when, and when I say coastal commission, I'm usually talking about staff. Um, because most, most of our work is, is with staff. Um, and, you know, and they have, obviously they have a lot of sway. They write, they write the staff reports and the recommendations for the, the coastal commission. Although, but the coastal commission does not always go with their staff recommendation. So that's, that's definitely, they, they sometimes go their own way, but, um, but staff opinion is very important.
Yeah, and I, I bring that up, uh, basically, so everyone recognizes that when we talk about staff, they're in Arcata. So, uh, it's not like, uh, they are far away and they probably know a lot more about Trinidad than we think.
Yeah, and the, the main staff person that oversees Trinidad at the moment lives in West Haven, so.
Um, so they should be easy to get to a workshop. Yeah, okay.
Well, their, their time, I think, is the issue as opposed to the location.
We'll bring them lunch.
Okay.
And dessert.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the, the body of the design standards? Okay, um, I'll just ask if there were any other questions or comments on the definitions. We have. We have. Six, eight, eleven pages of definitions. Are there any additional comments or questions on the definitions? Yes, Tristan?
Yeah, just on page two, the definition for clear story. At the very right there, I think it should read to admit rather than admit. That's all.
Okay, you're right.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I missed it.
Uh, page two, the definition for the clear story, uh, on the very right.
Oh.
Should read admit.
Admit, yes. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments on the definitions? Yes, Tom? You're on mute? Tom, you're on mute?
Sorry about that. I've, I kind of got shot done last time in regards to neighbor, what the definition of a neighbor is. As it's, but in short-term rentals, we real, we found out that it's not just right next door to your house. It's can be three houses down. And we're doing definitions. I'm just wondering where, where the definition of neighbor is going to be if it's not in here.
So the, the purpose of these definitions are things that are specific. To Trinidad's ordinances. They have a lot of legal implications, things that are commonly known. Or that are in a normal dictionary are not always in, are not generally in a zoning ordinance. So unless you have a specific, you know, if you want to define neighbor as a certain distance or a certain number of houses or something like that. If there's a specific. Need to define that, then certainly it should be included. But if we're, you know, just talking about. Neighbor in general doesn't need a definition in here. I, I don't think, but, but it, you know, we could add it certainly.
The first, the first thing that I would think of in regards to neighbor, even if I read the definition, would probably be just my next door neighbor. But the, the concept of it being three houses down and that we're all a neighborhood. Is, is a legal definition. That, that if my short-term rental affects houses, three houses down, I'm liable.
I, I, I thought that Trevor, what we did was that we had, and I don't even recall where it was now. But in the last two or three meetings, we did have an issue trying to. Uh, address the issue of adjacent properties versus other properties which were. Uh, further away, but yet at the same time could be affected by what was going on, on another property. And I don't recall if that had anything to do with the word neighbor per se. But I thought we were trying to address the issue of adjacency, if you will, of, of. Uh, various structures and development, et cetera. I don't know whether that answers your question, Tom, but I think we did try to. Uh, address the, the issue of the impact that development might have on surrounding. Properties and not necessarily call it right next door or even a, a neighbor. But just the impact on surrounding properties.
Yeah, and legally, my lawyer would say, you know, even if it was affecting down the street. You know, I, I could call it, call it affecting my property. So I'm, I'm okay either way. I was just thinking about it and kind of thought, you know, it'd be easy to put it in, but I don't want to hang things up. It's fine.
So I think we did that and that was discussed as the last section, so page eight. And we ended up with where view considerations are involved. The applicant is encouraged to contact property owners within a hundred feet and that could be affected by the project. So we didn't want to put a specific distance on it because someone further away could be, still be affected.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on design review standards? Okay. So Trevor, what would you like from us at this point? Do you want a motion or are you just ready to start working with coastal commission staff?
I don't think we need a recommendation or a motion until you're ready to recommend it to the city council. So I think just providing me that, that direction is fine.
Okay, very good. Thank you. New standards. Wow, amazing. All right. Next item on our agenda is the general plan update for the circulation elements. And this is the discussion of this, of the draft, oh, I'm sorry, I should ask if there's any. Public comment. I apologize. I should have done this a little bit earlier. One of the artifacts of Zoom is that you don't know necessarily if someone's out there. Any comments from the public on this agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll, we'll move on then. Thank you. Uh, as I said, the general plan update for the circulation elements. And Trevor, turn it over to you.
Sure. So again, I updated this. This is continued from, from the last meeting. I updated this based on our discussions at the last meeting. I did make a couple of notes on some specific suggestions. Because unfortunately, I wasn't able to show track changes because this document is still. I'm still tracking changes from the 2019 version that the coastal commission commented on. And so it's, I wouldn't be able to show you just the changes from the last meeting. So you just have to. Either compare your own versions or. Yeah, that's a, that's a unfortunate artifact and it's, it's getting very messy in terms of track changes. So again, I think this one, you know, it's been some pretty minor comments the last couple of meetings. And, and I would like to soon, and I, I know the, the city council is, is. Really wants to get the general plan done and keep moving. And I think really the, the next step for these is to get them back in coastal commission staff's hands. Um, and so that they can see our updates and get another round of comments. And hopefully, hopefully those will be pretty straightforward to address at this point. Because we've, we've addressed the big issues and, and then they'll, they'll come back to you again. Um, after that, and then hopefully make recommendations to, to the city council and get some of these finalized. Um, I did provide a new set of, of figures. So those are, those are new figures. And so the road classification system, that's mostly stayed the same. I did remove parking out of there. Let's see, and, and updated it and added, added some roads that were missing. Figure 12 is a, a new figure showing alternative transportation. So it shows the bus stops, bike racks, bike routes and pedestrian facilities, including trails and benches. Um, one thing I wonder is, is how accurate this map still is. And so I do think it does need to be ground truthed. Um, we did have a, a staff meeting today and the city now has, I think, a full complement of, of public work staff. And then also the, the water, water plant operation is going to be transitioning the city staff. So there was talk about some of these, particularly benches. There's a lot of benches that are falling into disrepair. You know, there's a policy, the city does have a policy for how to dedicate benches and how long that dedication lasts. Um, and so public work staff is supposed to be kind of keeping an eye out for, for benches that need to be replaced. Or, or in dis, disrepair. Um, so, so I was asking for volunteers to do some ground truthing. But, but maybe public work staff could, could do that as well. But if someone wants to, to take a few of those on and, and kind of mark up the map. And not, not just existing, but you know, if there are locations that don't have these things. And they're not marked as proposed on the map, we could add those as well. And I, I think the city does have some grant funding to get some. We're gonna try and use some of the park bond funding to get some bike racks and maybe a bike locker. So if anybody has ideas where those should go, we'll, let's see, we'll be talking about that. In the, in the near future. And then, let's see, and then figure 13 is also a new figure. So that's also kind of hot off the press. That's the, I just got that data from, from G H D. It's the as-built drawings for the stormwater system that is the culmination of. I think Becky said we've been working on this since 2006. The city is going to be looking at doing some sort of like ribbon cutting ceremony. Although I don't, you know, where are we gonna cut ribbons on the storm system? But anyway. So this has been kind of a long time coming to eliminate the outfall into Trinidad Bay. And to infiltrate the stormwater. It's not necessarily gonna. Get the city off the hook for that MS four permit that was, we were hoping for that discharge into the A S B S. But, but yeah, so this is, this is the map of the current stormwater system. So it also shows some flow directions. Um, I do have a couple of questions, like where do some of these things? Like there's a couple, there's this drain inlet on Main Street and I don't know where that goes. And G H D may not know where it goes either for that matter. Um, but yeah, so any comments, questions on this map? Because this is also a brand new one. And then figure 14 is the water service area. Um, so I've added in the Baker Ranch there where the, the hydrant and the lines go through. Um, it does show the sphere of influence. It does show, show the different sub areas. And then the entire water service area with the lines, the hydrants and the properties that are served with city water. Um, I do, I do want to talk further about. Sub area C, which is the one to the north. And I started, you know, I started writing up some background information. I decided I needed more, more time to get you, because it's, it's pretty complex. The, the history and, you know, the, the sphere of influence and to get you the background information on that. So, um, so I, I will want to talk more about that at the next meeting. But any general comments on the figures? And we can, we can make any edits that are needed.
Okay, thank you. Aaron?
Um, I just had a couple of questions on the staff report before we get into it. Trevor, one, on a side note, I'm happy to ground truth that map for you. I'll be home for most of August and can easily accomplish that. So I could, just need a clean copy of that. But then can you help me out with the staff report? It goes from page one to two and then I, I admit I was a little lost. It then jumps to page six, seven, eight or six, seven. And then it gets into the circulation element. Is that just an artifact or are those in context or what was I supposed to take away from those?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not clear. That is, that's one of the attachments. So, oh, and I didn't put it in the right order. So that is from the introduction chapter, the six and seven. And that is the description of the goals, principles, policies, programs and other initiatives. So as, and, and thank you for pointing that out because I wanted to mention that too. Richard pointed out how many programs there are overall. And one of the coastal commission comments was things aren't necessarily. Categorized as they're defined. And so that's one of the things I've been trying to work on with these edits. And sometimes it's a little difficult to decide where they should go. And it's also makes it a little bit more complicated because the coastal, coastal commission definition of a goal. Is different from the state's general plan definition of a goal. Where the code, where goals that are part of the certified L C P have to basically regulate development. Where the state definition for general plan goals is much broader than that. It can be things that the city wants to do. So, so it does, it does make that a little complicated. And that's where I use the, the symbol to differentiate the ones that are not part of the L C P because they don't regulate development. But yeah, so if I'm looking for any input, additional input from the commission on. Any of these that should be re-categorized. And, and so I provided these definitions to help you do that.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, Diane, had you grabbed the handle?
And so I, I've been working on the location of the benches and the ones that are out of shape. So Aaron, maybe we walk together on that, you know, around, around town. And I've talked to the city quite a bit about the fire hydrants. Because they're covered with vegetation. So Anton, you hear me again? Anyway, that, those.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying we're, I don't know, six weeks out now about that. I might just cut it myself, but I probably won't. Anyway, I'd like to walk around because I've been down to the, the trail by frames. And there's a nice Parker tree, Parker Creek bench, but the ones along the bluff are, are pretty bad. And we have one guy that lives close to the bluff, actually across the street that has a bench he wants to donate. So somehow, Trevor, we need to see the rules and regulations for donations. Because there's another family that wants to donate a bench.
Okay, so the, the city council updated the policy in 2018. So I'm sure you can get a copy from, from Gabriel.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And your maps are really good. Your G H Ds, they're, they're beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, they are pretty nice. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the staff report? Okay, as is customary, maybe we could go through this real quickly, page by page. And stop me when you need to make a comment. And, and we'll basically start with the introduction information. Thanks Trevor for adding the definitions in here. The definition of the program helped quite a bit in kind of interpreting and trying to understand programs. So that was very useful. Thank you. Any comments or questions on the introduction? Page one. Page two. Page three. I had a question, Trevor, on the one, two, third full paragraph on page three. Uh, the, the middle of the sentence says, are four such roads that exemplify the scenic beauty of the Trinidad planning area? Um, I think I know what that is, but would that, would that be necessary to define or explain?
Yeah, good point. So that would be probably figure three, I'm guessing. From the land use element shows the city's planning area. So I can reference figure three there, whatever figure number it is.
Okay, and, and just to make sure that is not. The, that is not the, uh, what is referred to in the Humboldt County Trinidad. Uh, planning area. Is that right?
Yeah, so there is, yeah, that often gets confused. So the county, for their, for their L C P, they have a Trinidad area plan. And that's their coastal land use plan for the Trinidad area. And that is a county plan and it's, it's a different. And that is a county plan and it's, it's a different area.
Yeah, that, that's why I said, I thought we just maybe would, should, I, I like your idea of referencing the, 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 the map, and I think that will do it. Okay, anything, anything else on three? Page four. Page five.
A question on page five, first paragraph under four issues of local significance. The last sentence reads speeding and blind driveway intersections on Edwards. Or, you know, and then it's, it's my comment is, is it only this area, is it too specific? Is it better to say speeding and blind rubber intersections throughout town are current issues? That way everybody, you know, because I mean, it's eye of the beholder, so to speak.
Or you're allowed to speed on the other streets. Good comment. Anything else on page five?
So where was that? On page five, Erin?
First paragraph under section for the last sentence. And I'm just suggesting that we remove the specificity. And it just, the concept of speeding and blind intersections is an issue in town. And that's important to mention, but let's just leave it global. Is my recommendation.
Okay. Did you find Diane? Okay, good. Page six.
Same, same concept, I apologize. With regards to overnight parking camping in the city, particularly on Edwards. Again, is that specificity next, necessary? People could make an argument, if I've had people camp, I've seen people camping, not a whole lot. It's not, yeah, they tend to focus there, but we want to be specific with the location, I guess. And how legitimate is the problem too? Or significant, I should say.
That's one for the eye of the beholder because based on my parking counts, it's not an issue. But it is perceived as an issue and it comes up at planning, at city council meetings occasionally. And from what I know, it is specific to Edward Street, although Main Street came up as well at one point.
Yeah. And I mean.
So I, I don't have.
I've had people camping on my street in, in front of my house throughout this. And it's, it happens occasionally, but it's not at every night. It's not enough for me to be worried about personally.
Yeah, I don't have, like I said, from what I've heard, it's mostly the concern on Edward Street. But I, you know, I, I don't, I.
Not important, it was just, it was just a question. If it's comfortable for everybody, leave it in, then leave it in.
So we, we could make it less specific, that's fine. Cause I think other streets and other locations, the, the park has come up as well. So yeah, we can make it more general.
Diane, you had a comment?
Should there be anything about the share for enforcement in those road and traffic issues? Trevor, none of that was mentioned.
It's your lack of enforcement, I think that is definitely an issue.
Yeah, put it first. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on six? Seven? Eight?
Slow down. Okay, I'm not as fast. All right, volume, let's see. Okay. Traffic counts. Oh boy, I'm off again, Glenn.
No, you're not, you're there.
You know, I don't have, all right, join the conversation. Okay, what page are we on now? Eight?
We just looked at page eight, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm done, it's truck, truck traffic on nine. So. Something about signs needs to be in there to direct them. Erin and I are going to do a truck count, just kidding Erin. At the market only, right? So there, there are no, no signs. I talked to Eli about this. When the truck, when the Canadian truck drivers got off and wanted to rest here and eat. And then they tried to make my corner and I made him back up. And it happened with the moving truck. So some kind of sign thing needs to be in that to direct their circulation in the city. They're getting better because Nelson at the market has told them, you know, to back in and then they've got a bigger space behind the market now for them. But some kind of signs for them. For truck routes.
Or, or perhaps just, we don't have defined truck routes. So I mean, to the first statement, I like that because it says we don't have defined truck routes. So that's, we need to get that. And then how we identify those is a question for down the road. I don't know necessarily signs are the right, we, we can figure that out, we get to. But we need to define a truck route first.
So we have beat this. Found Erin for three years at least.
You're breaking up, man.
And nothing's happened, okay. I'm just saying that we talked to Eli and the council and the planning commission for at least three years about these signs. And one of the major vehicles on every road are trucks. Now there are more trucks, you probably see them on your way to the Bay Area.
So, let's bear in mind that this issue of truck traffic, as well as these other comments here, are under issues of local significance. So as Erin pointed out, what we're trying to do is identify issues. And that's what we're doing here with the truck traffic. It's in other parts of documentation, not only here, but elsewhere where we'll have to solve the problem. And I understand Diane, your frustration, but we, but I think the city council needs to move on this. And we can certainly, and have, put in the planning documents requirements for truck routes, et cetera. So it can be done.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just point out, CIRC 1.9 on page 11 does direct the city to designate truck routes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, knew we covered it somewhere, but, okay, anything else on page nine? Ten?
Apologies, one thing on 10, under CIRC 1.4, the program CIRC 1.42.1. I'd suggest removing the word collector and just construct, just leave it general again, along streets as needed. Cause it may be traffic calming measures on streets other than collector streets might be necessary.
Good comment, thank you.
I think so that there has always been, at least in the existing general plan, and then it's been mostly preserved through this, has been to discourage improvements on anything other than Main, Trinity and Edwards.
Specific for traffic calming or is that more sidewalks and, and whatnot has been my?
Well, tra, well, I guess traffic calming could take various forms.
You know, I, I know there's a lot of folks in town would like to see speed humps on either end, say of some of the, the, the local streets. Because they're used as bypass alternative, alternative routes for folks that might not know the main routes. And so I, I don't know, I just don't want to.
No, I, I think you're right, yeah. Speed humps, even, even striping could be traffic calming. So those, that could be appropriate on the local streets, yeah, okay.
Okay. Page 11. I just have one comment under CIRC 1.8. It says, "ensure that roadway widths, including alleys, et cetera, are maintained to provide adequate for all users." I think that should be access for all users, including emergency vehicles. Including emergency vehicle access. Anything else on page 11? 12? 13? 14? 15? 16? On page 16. Program CIRC 3.2.3. It's just a spelling error, but coordinate with HTA, et cetera, by installing sheltered stops. It says boot brakes, I think it means bike racks, bike lockers and ADA facilities.
What page are you on?
Just starting page 17.
Oh, 17, I'm a little behind you.
Are you all set with this? Diane?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything on page 17? 18? 19?
I had a question on 19, CIRC 4.7 refers to the California Coastal Trail within the city. Where is that section within the city? I'm just curious.
Let's see, is it on, it's on figure 10, the trails map. Let's see if it made it on. Yeah, so it is on figure 12 as well. It's the dotted blue line. So it starts at scenic, goes down Groth Lane, Parker Creek, down the beach, up Axelingren, over Van Wyk, through the harbor and upstate beach.
Okay, cool, thank you.
And I think there is a sign over the bluff at the state beach of, of, by the roundabout.
Yeah, the, the, there was an effort to put little, the little round.
Yeah, there's, I haven't seen it for about a year, but it, it's there somewhere.
Yeah, and I think they left Trinidad off because signs are always so controversial in Trinidad.
Except for trucks, just kidding.
One other, one other comment on that page is that CIRC 4.6, I think it should be 4.5. There was some rearranging done, so just lost the number there. Okay, anything else on 19? Okay, 20. I had two comments on this page and I, I made this comment the last time, Trevor. And in the first paragraph up there, the first partial paragraph, it talks about redwood, coast energy and biomass, natural gas and petroleum. Each comprise about a third of the total primary energy consumed in the, in the county. And, and I, I did not get a chance today, I meant to look at the CAP, the Climate Action Plan. But I'm pretty sure the biomass is way, way down, it's not a third.
Yeah, each, yeah, you know, I looked for that where I'm, so I looked in the CAP. I don't think that information is in the CAP, I couldn't find it. I had recently gotten that from, you know, my last update, maybe in the spring, I got it off RCEA's website. I could not find it again. But yeah, I mean, it. Yeah.
Well, I, I'll look at the CAP and, and make sure I am interpreting it correctly. And then I'll get back to you, but I just want to make sure we're using the best data possible. And then the other comment is at the bottom of the page. CIRC 5.1 says require new development to minimize energy consumption. And I get that. But there were a number of, of sub text underneath that. Some of it got moved, but I don't think all of it did. So I wasn't sure whether or not that was an artifact of editing or if we were really taking out some of that. And it was on page 20 of last month's as well. Let me find it real fast here, I have last month's here. Yeah, there were, there were several programs that were underneath CIRC 5.1. And it wasn't clear to me that they all got moved over to CIRC 5.21, or CIRC 5.2. Is that clear as mud?
Yeah, it looks like they all got moved to, to 5.2.
Okay, they all did, I wasn't sure.
I thought they fit better under there, but I, you know, I think this is one of those things where you know, there, there will continue to be more organizational work. I think every time you pick it up and look at it and put it down, that it's one, so. And I think it will be easier once we have the rest of the elements in front of us too, and kind of get a pattern going. So I'm hoping that with the next round after the next round of coastal commission comments, that one of the primary things we're going to be doing is kind of some of that organization. But, but like I said, I'm, I'm happy to take any now as well.
Yeah, okay, that, that's great, thank you. Anything on page 21?
I had one question under CIRC 5.3.2. We talked about adopting a solar access ordinance for, to stream on the approval. Is it, is there the will to have it be a solar or wind access ordinance? And have streamlined approval process for either one of those as a renewable, just a thought?
It could, I think there is a, there is a state law that a state solar access ordinance that the city is not in compliance with. So it's, in that sense, it's a little different from wind. I also wonder, does wind have the potential for more impacts than solar in terms of views and noise? Things like that?
Fair enough, yeah, I just didn't know if it was worth the city pursuing a streamlined process for wind as well.
It, it could be.
But that's for different, different discussion, okay.
Well, you know, we kind of covered that under the next program, CIRC 5.3.3, where we say allow alternative energy facilities for onsite use as an accessory use in all zones, consistent with habitat values and aesthetic considerations. So we kind of have it covered there.
Yeah, and the main 5.3 also talks about small scale renewables such as, and lists wind, solar, carbohydrate, et cetera. Okay.
Okay. Page 22. I think this was a comment again from last month, but under other energy initiatives. We, I, I don't know if we have to define title 24. I'm not real familiar with that myself.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I could add an explanation there, that's California's green building code.
Okay, thank you. Page 23? Page 24?
Maybe a typo in the paragraph beginning sequo, the first full paragraph. Second line, it says, "and GHD emissions." I'm assuming that probably should be GHD. Uh, second line, it says, and GHD emissions. I'm assuming that probably should be GHG.
I think GHD would love that one. Anything else on 24? 25. 26. 27. I mean, 8.
Uh, sorry, 27, under the first, the second paragraph, under stormwater system management, the acronym SWQQPA. Is that an extra Q in there?
Yeah. Anything else on 27? 28. 29. Oh, yes, Diane. You're on mute.
What's PM 10? It's on, um. It's on 25 or. Um, page, page 24 and fo, with a focus on PM 10, un, under the goal circulation 6.
Yeah, so that is defined earlier in the uh air, in the text of the air quality um section. And I do think, you know, we, we did start adding acronym lists to each element, and so I have not done that with this. Um, so I think that that would be helpful to add the acronym list. So PM 10 is particulate matter less than 10 microns. And it's particular concern because it gets into the lungs.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see, where did we leave off? 20, 29, right? Anything on page 29? 30. 31. 32. 33. 34. Um, comment on the last bullet on page 34. The bullet says limited reliable data exists for estimating low return flows on Lough and Holtz. However, the existing data. Does show that levels have dropped below the city's water right plus the required bypass flows. Uh, I. I, I, I read that initially as it is always below, when in fact, I'm sure that during the rainy season, we are not. Is that what we were trying to say on that?
Oh, like have dropped as in, okay, so occasionally drop? Or?
On occasion, or yeah, something like that, yeah.
Something have on occasion.
Oh, yeah, just, just some slight clarification, maybe, just to make sure that uh it's clear that it's not always below. Anything on page, again, on page 34? 35. 36. 37. Last but not least. 38.
Uh, I like 12.8 now, Trevor. Thanks for cleaning that up.
Yeah, it was good. Okay, um. I think it probably merits taking a little bit of time to look at the maps. I know that uh, this is the first time that we've seen some of those, so. Starting with figure 11. Is there, are, are there any comments or questions or clarifications on this figure? Um, I had one question, uh, Trevor. I'm looking at um. What I believe is Groth Lane. And uh, I, it, it, and what it is defined here as a private access road, and I get that. Uh, but that road, doesn't it split? And one goes to the Groth House and the other goes down to uh Hookup with Prairie Creek. Trail. Should that have the? Um, other part there? I, I, I think that's still a private road, correct?
It is, a, and that's a good question, and I did, you know, I, I did, I struggled with some of these private access ways. Cause, cause actually Parker Creek Drive. Is a, is a odd one because that's actually. A, a parcel that's owned by the city, so it is public, but it's not a right of way. Um, it's like private property. Um, Groth Lane, what I.
It's Growth Lane, it's not Groth, it's Growth.
Sorry.
Um. I tried to. Indicate where, so I didn't, I tried not to do individual driveways. So where it goes down to Parker Creek is an individual driveway. The, the one exception I made was Saunders. Because that actually is so big and it looks like a continuation almost of, of. Ocean, and so I sort of wanted to identify it as a private. Access road, so people don't think it's a roadway. Um, so that's the one exception. To things that are like individual driveways.
Okay.
So that, so, and this is an estimate of where it, of where Growth Lane still accesses multiple houses.
Okay, I, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were trying to uh, uh, show. Any other, any other questions or comments on figure 11?
So the um, Parker Creek is a trail. It's not really a road. It's. It's actually the size of a sidewalk. After, you know, with the, the broken lines.
Where the broken lines is, or after the broken lines?
Um.
Cause it does provide access.
Yeah, I guess after the broken lines and then.
Cause it does provide access to multiple properties down there.
Right. And then the one to the Growth House, and then down to Cheryl's is a road.
It's a road, but it's a private, I mean, there is a pu, there's a public easement over it.
Right.
But it's a private road. And I am, you know, these, I am totally open, you know, same with, same with um Trinidad Head. Um, there is public access, but it's. It's not a public road.
So the. Road signs need to be seen. And the one on Van Wick. And Edwards is still covered by a bush. So you can see. I don't know, you can't see it all.
Is that upper or lower?
It's lower, almost to the beach, you know, it's right where the sidewalk starts. It's the house on the corner of um. Okay, let me turn my map. Okay, I've, I've told the city about this too. I might just go cut it. Let's see, it's Galendo. Galendo and Edwards, that corner. So you can't, it's just tucked into the tree. You can see Edwards, but not Galendo, or maybe you can see Galendo and not Edwards. I can't remember. I'll just put my, that on my list for um. Kyle and. Ross, okay.
Anything else on figure 11? Okay, figure 12. Well, I'll, I'll start off. I. I, uh, I'm, I'm a little confused on Scenic Drive. And I, it, um, and they show Scenic Drive as a proposed. Class 3 bike route. And as you travel south on scenic, you get to the city limits and it stops. Is, is that because it's no longer considered a proposed class 3 bike route? Or what, what's the explanation for it just going away?
Because it's just includes city limits, and so maybe I need to add within the city to the legend. Cause I don't know exactly where the county, so this comes from the regional bike plan, the HCOG regional bike plan. So I looked at, you know, what was identified for the city, and it, they only extend the city limits. So same with West Haven and Patrick's Point as well.
Yeah, I kind of suspected that. It was just, I just wanted to make sure, uh, because um. Well, I, I guess the question is then that's the same issue with the Pacific Coast Bike Route?
But that is just 101.
Well.
Not just.
No, it, oh, I see, I see. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just 101.
But on the map, it doesn't extend outside of city.
It does extend outside city limits, so, so I think either two options, um, I could add. In the legend, under proposed class 3 bike route, um, I could add in parentheses within city limits. Or I could check the HCOG maps for the county. And verify that they extend all the way on those roads and just extend them.
You should show Gabe because he knows scenic drive well, you know, the um. Where it stops, the city limits and the bike route.
I, I like the idea, Trevor, that your second idea of verifying where they exist outside the city limits, and then if not. And you can't verify that, then just put a, a note somewhere on here saying only depicting within the city's jurisdiction. You know, the other way to do it, just be clear, you know?
Yeah.
And then take anything else that's outside the city limits if we end up having to go that route.
And, and um, one other comment um is, while it's not necessarily for this map. But um, we also should put in the back of our minds that when we're talking about. Alternative transportation, that we might consider what we want to do about e-bike locations at some time in the future. Um, you know, Trinidad's ripe for having a couple of stations for e-bikes. That would be really.
You, you mean charging stations?
Uh, yeah, just like, I call them e-bikes, but I guess really they're a combination of both e-bikes and regular bikes. Like they have in Arcata.
Yeah.
So do you mean like a, a city, city, like they're owned by the city, but they would be checked out? Okay, so like a bike share.
Oh, like those bird scooter type of things.
No, no, the big electric bikes. Talk, get Tom to talk to you about it, Trevor. Tom, the uh, fire chief. He has a, an electric bike.
You're referring Richard to like the bike shares on the square in Arcata?
Uh, I guess I'm, I'm actually talking about several different things. I shouldn't, uh, I, I, yes. I'm, I'm talking about the, the bike sharing racks that are on the, the plaza as one thing. Um, but also as people get more, purchase more and more e-bikes. That uh, we might consider what we have to do for charging stations and that sort of.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's, it's just looking at the whole bicycle transportation infrastructure. And um, a, and that gets controversial, I realize, especially with bike racks. And uh, we'll, we'll get to that, but um.
And stations.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, um, anything else on figure 12? Okay, figure 13.
Um, I had a question and a suggestion. Um, the suggestion would be. There's a lot of blue items in blue, um, for example, like the bio swale and stormwater pipe kind of co-located and it got a little bit. And I am also looking at this on an electronic version, so it's not as clear as it might be on a large format, uh, but just if a different brighter color might be better for that. Um, and then my question was, what happens in a treatment chamber versus an infiltration pipe? Treatment chamber implies a treatment. Is it just a collecting point, or do we know, or? Cause I don't.
I believe that's the case. I can verify, so um. So the infiltration pipes are purely infiltration. I, um, they do screen out. At least they screen out trash.
Are those the big massive ones that we just put in? Would that be an infiltration pipe that have basically huge perforated pipe?
Yeah, so that's what's in the harbor. Um, but I, I, I actually have a similar question, so I will, um, I will ask for clarification on that.
Cool, thanks.
Um, Trevor, I had two questions. Um, the first one is. I, I see the um drainage, surface drainage uh arrows. And most of the, most of the places in town makes sense. But I'm just curious as to why we don't have any drainage on the uh east side of, of um. View. Uh, in other words, down towards Parker Creek, because that drops off. And um, clearly there's, water's gotta go somewhere there. Uh, but I, I, I know that there's no inf, there's no drainage infrastructure per se, other than maybe Parker Creek. But wa, was that just, is there a rationale for why we don't show any drainage on that side?
Yeah, so I get, so this is um, from a GHD map and. Yeah, so they had, they only had the stormwater area that, that drains to the ASBS. Um, so, so they only mapped the areas that drain to. The out, the outfall, basically. Um, technically Parker Creek drains to the ASBS, but I, I think we could. With the LiDAR data, we should be able to add it in other locations as, as well.
Yeah.
Well, it's on East Street, close to View. East has several stormwater drains.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I, I was just thinking of, of why we didn't show drainage on um, like, for example, the uh. Uh, the large vacant field behind Murphy's and down onto uh Parker Creek Trail.
And maybe also add in around, you know, the Chevron and the shopping center and everything too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If that is available.
Um, there is all the drainage structures associated with the freeway interchange as well, but I guess maybe we just don't have data on that.
The water, that's the water company, the water people have some of that data. The treatment plant and um, the city hall.
The. Uh, one other question I had, Trevor, is that um. For the uh legend that shows the stormwater pipe, there are little arrowheads on that green line. I, I assume that I'm supposed to, that, that that is the direction that water is flowing. Is that correct? So with that in mind, if I look down on Edward Street. At um, the several um. Storm, uh, stormwater inlets. And it shows that the, the, the line is on the north side of Edwards. But the water is flowing from the bluff side up to. The other side of Edwards. Is, is water actually flowing the other direction?
No, I, I can verify that, but I assume that the pipe on the northern end is lower than. No, I, I can verify that, but I assume that the pipe on the northern end is lower than the inlet on the south end.
Yeah, it's just, it was just not intuitive that that's what, you know, was the way it was should go. Okay. Um, any other questions, comments on this, uh, figure?
Just go take a look at all the work they did at the Marine Lab, Edwards, and down at the beach. It's amazing.
Yeah. It is.
And just thanks for updating this figure, Trevor, with all the new work that's been done. That's, that's great.
Well, they're, they're still running around the stormwater gang.
Okay, moving on to figure 14. Now, this is the one you said you wanted to spend some more time, uh, and maybe discuss this, um, next, next time or what, what do you want, uh, to do?
So tonight I'm looking for comments overall on the, on the figuring, things that are confusing or, you know, just like the comments from the last one. What I'd like to spend time on at the next meeting is specifically, do we want to amend Area C? And I'm, and I'm gonna provide you some more background information to help you make that decision.
And that's the area, Trevor, that if we were to expand, we're concerned about the significant demand that could exist within that area?
That's correct. So, yes, so, and I, I have broken it down a little bit. Um, you know, I, I think there are options to explore. Um, it is priority coastal act uses. So the coastal commission wants us to keep that area. It also has high tax, um, revenue potential. Um, but it is a high water demand area, yeah. But they also have their own water systems that could potentially be incorporated. So, yeah, uh, um, it's complicated, but yeah, we'll talk more next, next month.
So will you give us, um, some background on their water? Their existing water, um, supply?
I, I don't have a ton of background information. I have talked to, at one point I, I did talk to several of them, um. And so a few years ago, the Water Board adopted stricter requirements for small water systems. And, and I think the city was affected by, by that as well. Um, and a number of them have upgraded their systems. Like Ocean Grove has a, has a pretty fancy new treatment system for their water source. Um, Emerald Forest, which is the, the northernmost parcel there, I believe. Um, RV Park, they are still in the process of trying to get their system upgraded and, and they have expressed a strong desire to, to hook up to city water because they're having some, some issues meeting those requirements. Um, so I have some information on some of the systems, but not a lot. Thank you.
So any general comments for Trevor on figure 14?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Maybe, I mean, I was gone last time, but, um, what is the difference between A, B1, B2, and C? I mean, could we, could you spell that out a little bit more?
Yeah, I included it in the text a little bit, um, and I, I was torn between including those subareas or not, but I do talk about them in the text because we prioritize them. So we did a, a water demand assessment a few years ago. And I, I broke the, the water service up into these areas. They, they weren't exactly the same as this, um. The, the A, B, and C, the overall letters were the same, but at D, at least D, I think, there was, there were three Ds, but anyway. So that I could look at, um, demand in a smaller area, you know, that would sort of make sense for the city to look at potential, potential annexation, what it could actually serve. Um, it, it played into the update of the sphere of influence. Um, so I'll provide some more background information, but, but it does come up in the text because the city basically prioritized areas A, B, and C, um, when we, uh, so the, the, the Rantryas Hotel prompted a lot of, a lot of work on the city's water system, kind of looking at, at the, the city's, the capacity. And so the planning commission developed some, some policies. The council tasked the planning commission with developing policies for hooking up people outside city limits. Um, and how to prioritize that instead of just, you know, first come, first served willy nilly. Should we kind of prioritize certain areas? Um, for example, areas that, that might, you know, eventually be annexed by the city. So that's, that's where that came from is so we could look at, um, you know, demand a little bit more specifically in, in areas of, of the city service area.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Um, yes, Dan.
So Trevor, how long has, uh, the coastal commission been, um, talking to you about developing that, um, area? See.
So, so it came up, um, with the extension, the Cal Fire extension. Um, and we had to actually amend the existing general plan to allow that connection to Cal Fire. And the county also had to amend theirs. And as part of that amendment, the coastal commission actually required the city to add a policy that we're not gonna serve. Was it, and it was controversial at the council, but we accepted it just to get the, the Cal Fire water line through. But the coastal commission required us to add a policy that said something to the effect that any other connections won't remove capacity needed to serve that area. So basically saying we couldn't hook up anybody else if we didn't have remaining capacity to serve that area. And so we had to kind of look at, well, what, what is the demand from that area? Um, and we can't serve it. And so, um, so, so it's an issue. And I'm guessing they're gonna require us to add something like that back into the general plan, but it's not in there now. Um, but I think they would be amenable to a shrinking Area C. Because we are, we did shrink, um, the, the area west of 101 down to the water plant used to be in the service area. We took that out. Um, so anyway, and, and I, I think this plays into what we'll be talking about next month too. So I'll, I'll provide you some additional background information on that.
So that, that area where there are, where it is in C, could we put another water plant up there? Where some of the.
I mean, water plants are pretty expensive, so that I don't know if that is really an option, um, but if.
But it seems like it would be a good idea because it's, um, a good road, flat. And if there is water there, I mean, I'm just gonna throw that out because the city's water plant is a snake to get there. You know, for the workers and then, you know, people that are traveling on West Haven Drive. So it's just an idea if we're gonna develop it, um, let's get a little, well, let's get some water tanks up there.
Yeah, I think you could do it with, I think you could do it with the, still with the treatment plant where it is, but using storage and, and pump.
Right, yeah, because Madron wants to help us with storage. There are grants out there for storage and this is the, the issue now. Water. I mean, we have the ocean, but we still, if there's water up there in the ground, let's get it and put it in, in some tanks. Cuz it seems like it'd be a good, a good area. Oh, okay, just an idea.
Okay, anything else? On this map or on this figure? Once again, I'll ask if there's any public comments on this agenda item. Here in none. So once again, Trevor, um, I don't think we need a, um, or, um, anything other than just a, a consensus that, that we're moving this, this on, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah. So I don't think you need to make a motion. Um, if you're comfortable, then I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and finish my responses to the coastal commission comments. I've got a letter to go along with my responses that are in the actual document. Um, and it will include the introduction chapter, the land use element, the conservation, open space and recreation element, as well as the circulation element. Um, I think the other thing that I will do though is I will provide this to the city council cuz they're, they're itching to, to keep working on the general plan. So I think they'd like to see it. So, but I, I will make clear that it's not in, it's not yet in a form that is recommended for them to adopt, but it's going back to the coastal commission. Um, but I do think we still have some figure work. I have all new figures for all the elements. So, um, next month I plan on bringing you all the figures, all the new figures, um, as well as these ones with the edits that we talked about tonight.
Sounds great. Thank you. Okay, um, moving on to, um, agenda item number four, which is the housing related zoning ordinance update. Discussion regarding a zoning ordinance amendment to implement programs within the city's adopted housing element. We'll turn it over to you, Trevor.
Yeah, so this is, um, this is one of our grant tasks under the, the LEAP grant. So I provided a little bit of background on the city's housing element. Um, as I mentioned, the housing element is, the, the state is because of the housing, um, lack of housing and expensive housing in the state, the, the legislature has been, I mean, they, the number of bills that they have been passing each year is, is kind of nuts. Um, and so they've been getting more strict about housing elements. And so the housing element is one that the city doesn't have a whole lot of. It has a lot more legis, uh, regulatory requirements, so it's, it's not as, um, you know, open to local control. So we, we did get some help with updating that and we actually got certified by HCD, which was something I wasn't sure we could ever do. Um, and the housing element has a number of, of implementation programs in it. And then the state is providing funding to implement things that increase housing. So, um, we applied for some of this funding to, to implement, um, some of the directives in the housing element. So this, this amendment is sort of a, a first stab at the low, at the low hanging fruit, um, in, in those. So, um, most of these are, are pretty straightforward. Um, again, there, you'll notice the, the definitions all come, almost all come straight from, um, state law. Um, and the requirements basically just follow state law. So, um, I provided you a, a summary. So some of the, some of the definitions are new. Some definitions are updated to meet the requirements of state law. Um, the, the primary things in there are going to be, um, employee housing is a new, a new thing. The family daycare home as a specific, there's not just regular daycares anymore. Um, residential care facility, single room occupancy units, supportive housing and transitional housing. Um, so again, these are all, the, the city has to, state law basically says we have to allow these as residential uses, almost all of these. Um, so, um, like daycares are considered an accessory use, so they're now a home occupation. I added them under home occupations. Um, employee housing, single room occupancy units, residential care facilities for less than six people. Um, supportive housing and transitional housing are all allowed within existing single family residences. So they're basically considered a, a family, um, and allowed within, um, just subject to the same requirements as a single family resident. So you can't have additional parking, you can't have additional setbacks, you can't have, they're basically considered by the state to be residential uses. So, so in essence, that's what this is. Um, I did note that it turns out, um, H1, H, implementation measure seven, HI seven, um, the city does not have to. We are not subject to that because we're in the coastal zone. We're not in an urban area. Um, there are a couple others I started to, to look at, um, but those are worded a little bit differently and use the phrase by right. And coastal development permits in essence are not by right. So I, I was thinking about trying to add those in, but I, at this point, I, I need to do a little bit more research with coastal commission staff again to, to discuss what that means in terms of coastal development permits. So, um, so like I said, this is kind of the low hanging fruit. I think, I, I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, you know, some of it might be controversial, you know, some of the, the, um, you know, transitional or supportive kind of housing for, for homeless. Um, but again, it's the, the state says they're allowed in, in a residence as a residential use. So I'm not sure there's much we can do about that. Um, and then again, the light, and then the likelihood of someone actually locating one of these things in Trinidad is um, super low anyway.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, uh, questions, comments, clarifications requested for the, uh, staff report? Yes, Kristen?
Uh, yeah, you, I guess throughout this, you referenced the PD zone. Is that planned development zone or what? Is that the same as mixed use or what?
Yeah, good, good question. So right now it's PD plan development. In the general plan update, we're proposing it to be mixed use MU. But it'll be, basically be the same zone, just a different name.
Okay. Um, and then also, I guess, going through these, um, the various zone, zoning ordinances, um, or I guess I, I wasn't quite sure what, well, I see what you've, you've added in here and that's sort of what you wanted us to review, but, um, are, are we also reviewing all the other parts of those zoning ordinances as part of this exercise? Or is that gonna be a separate exercise?
That will be a separate exercise. So this grant task is specific to those, um, these housing measures. Um, the entire ordinance, zoning ordinance needs to be updated and we do have some grant funding to do that. Um, and we, we've done little pieces so far, but it's, um, that's gonna be a, a big, that's gonna be a big effort. So this, this is more, that, that's not gonna happen for several years. This is something we can go ahead and get done now.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Um, Trevor, I, um, I saw where you added in items associated with, um, HI one. And you discussed why we don't need HI seven. But I didn't see anything about HI 11. Is that, are, are you saying that, uh, what you previously said is that there's going to be another revision to this? I'm just not clear on what's supposed to be in here and what isn't. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Sorry, uh, the daycare centers, that was 11.
Oh, okay, okay, I, okay. So it is in there. Quite a bit. So, and, and then again, just one last clarification. There's really nothing we can do about this, really. Is there? I mean.
Nope. Um, you know, I don't know. You know, I think the Coastal Commission, they are, they have gotten the message that they need to be more supportive of housing. So housing is not a priority under the Coastal Act, and so they've been somewhat not particularly supportive of housing, but I think they've gotten directive from the state that they need to do more. So I don't, you know, I if we tried to do if we didn't do anything, no one's gonna come after the city. I mean, we're small, you know, a a big city that didn't do this. You know, the 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 state might send the attorney general after him eventually. The state is starting to do that a little bit. You know, the again, the likelihood of them going after Trinidad is low. So I think if we did nothing, nothing would happen. I think if we tried to do something that was in conflict with state law, I think the Coastal Commission might call us on it because it has to be certified by them. And I think if we didn't do anything now, the Coastal Commission would call us on it when we do the big update.
So so just from a process standpoint, once you have made these changes and we've agreed to them, does this go to the Coastal Commission next, or does this have to go back to the state level housing?
No, this this is not something that has to be reviewed by the state, other than the granting. You know, we have to provide reports to the grant, the granting agency, which is HCD. No, this would be if so, the next steps for this, if the planning commission is is comfortable with this as it is or making some changes. There is a little bit of noticing, I I have to follow for an LCP update and send a notice to the Coastal Commission, for example. And then the planning commission would take formal action on this. And then it would go to the city council for a a first and second reading. And then it would be submitted to the Coastal Commission as an LCP amendment for certification.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That helps. Any other questions on the staff report? Okay. As is customary. If we could just go through one page at a time, and if you have questions, just stop me and we'll we'll go through this. Okay? Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Clarification, Trevor. Under family daycare home seventeen oh eight dot two seven five A and B. So they're defining the large family daycare home and a small family daycare home. And a large one is for seven to fourteen children, I get that. A small one is for eight or fewer children. So that implies to me that you could have, if you had eight people or eight children, you could be both or either one. So I'm I'm a little confused.
That's a good question, and and this law recently changed where they only dictated that you had to allow small family daycare homes now. And then they also changed the number ranges. So it might be a typo, this might be eight now. But then eight would still overlap. Let me I will look at the regulations again and clarify that.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else on page four? Page five?
Yeah. Under seventeen, well, I guess it's throughout here, but it first occurs in seventeen oh eight forty four fifty five. The second line. These manufactured homes are described using body feet. What is a body but?
Yeah, I didn't even know that either.
It's probably marching with your feet and counting. Eight body feet. I mean, I assume it's the length, but yeah, maybe we need a definition for body feet. My husband does that.
Dimensions like that, like, yeah.
I mean, I guess I would just say, take out the word body and then it makes sense.
And and I think, you know, I think we can, I have seen some variation in in definitions. For the most part, I tended to just copy out of the state regulations that seemed the easiest. Some definitions just refer to the state regulations because sometimes they change. But yeah, I I think it doesn't have to be exactly verbatim, as long as the meaning is the same. So yeah, I would be amenable to just removing body feet unless there is some weird reason to to have that in there.
Okay, anything else on page five? Page six?
Are you at a I TP two, should we include the definition? And I assume that's park trailer, my initial response is probably, what is it? What is a park trailer? I'd love to know.
So, yeah, so that's one where I I it's a law, I think it's a long, if I recall, it's a long definition, which is why this one was already getting long, and I thought, oh, gosh, to add that as well. So I just referred to the the definition. Those are what are called the they're known as the park model units. So the little like, they almost look like tiny homes over at Hidden Creek RV Park. They have
Okay.
Four of them over there.
Right.
Those are park model units that are basically they're permanent. They are, they're they're permanent, but they're still considered RVs.
Gotcha. So I guess that I'm totally comfortable with us referring to the definition. Would this be an opportunity then to kind of look at the document as a whole and to keep it a little evergreen and have it just everything point back to the definition? Or is it worth having it spelled out some but not others? Because I wonder with affordable housing and some plans I've heard for Hidden Creek, one of this this park trailer gonna become a more prevalent thing, or is people want to add ADUs and whatnot? I don't know.
I I think and 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 may maybe I should ask Coastal Commission staff, but because our ordinance is certified by the Coastal Commission, it does stay static, and I don't know how the Coastal Commission feels about changing definitions. You know, because if you just point to the state definition, it could change. The Coastal Commission could be like, well, no, that's that affects coastal resources, and so we can't just automatically change the definition. Yeah, so maybe it's worth, maybe it's worth including a definition for perk trailer.
And what page is that on?
I had a question on had a question on page six as well. Under the residential care.
Okay, got it.
Under residential care facility, the second sentence there, under the definition, says, determined by the State Department of Social Services for twenty-four-hour non-medical care of persons in need of personal services, supervision, etc. So my my concern there is that when we say non-medical care, what what's the definition of that? In other words, if you were to give someone an aspirin, is that considered medical care? And that would not be something that is allowed under residential care facility. So I I'm confused as to the extent that or or how non-medical care is being used in this instance.
I can look for that information for you. I I think this is taken directly from the state code, but I can I can look at that for you.
Yeah, well, that was that that that's why I was asking earlier.
I think what you'll find, Trevor, based off my experience here at work, is it's gonna come to a state licensure issue. For example, is it just a home for folks with developmental disabilities that just need a place to live? Versus, you know, an assisted living environment, a nursing home, those types of things. Because we have all the mix here in 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 my jurisdiction where I am right now. So I think that kind of will take care of itself with the with the state licensing requirements. But definitely worth clarifying for sure.
Anything else on page six? Seven?
I just just a question that bridges both six and seven. Examples for supportive and traditional housing, is that specifically targeting a particular population? Is that could transitioning and supportive in in what in what sense, I guess? Just so I understand what it is we're talking about.
Yeah, so I believe supportive housing uses target population in the definition? Or is it transitional housing?
I think it's transitional. Gotta go go back to target housing.
The supportive includes the target population.
Target population, so which is why I included a definition to target population. Transitional housing is is more more inclusive. So can be anybody that that needs short-term housing.
And doesn't necessarily need to be for any kind of medical condition or anything like that, just is housing challenged?
For trans for transitional, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so transitional is basically just, you know, I think it's six months or less, anybody who needs it. Where supportive housing is for that target population.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on seven? Eight?
Oh, wow, this is more of a general question, I guess, but well, I guess on eight. The a use permit, I just, is a use permit like the same thing as a coastal development permit?
No, good, good question. So coastal development permit is required for anything that meets the definition of development, which is just about anything unless it's exempt. Principally permitted uses are outside the coastal zone. Those are uses that are allowed by right. When I was saying that by right, you basically have a right to do that. So if a restaurant is allowed, you, the city can't really say no if you meet their requirement. So and that's by right, where a use permit is more, well, maybe these uses would be compatible, but we want to review it. So so a use permit has its own set of findings that it's compatible with the neighborhood. It won't have traffic and noise and air quality impacts and and things like that.
Okay.
Anything else on page eight? Page nine? Ten? You had asked a question on page ten about limit on the number or density. And it's a good question. I don't know that I I and again, that goes back to my my point of how much control do we have over that? It seems to me that we should have some sort of ability to limit the density, but I'm not so sure that we are allowed. So can you clarify that for me?
I think you can. So single-room occupancy units were a little bit more loose. And so I think so I think you could, I think you could say a maximum amount or a maximum density there. I'm the the PD zone, that is PD zone, right? Does have a density limitation based on septic. So they couldn't be denser than what what the lot could could provide for septic systems. So that's gonna limit density on its own. But maybe you want to also limit the number. I, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, say the the lot behind Murphy's. You know, I don't know how many single-room units that lot could accommodate with a septic system, and you wouldn't until you study the soil and, you know, pergrates and things like that. So we can't really say, but maybe you want to say, you know, because of traffic issues or whatever, you want to limit it to no more than ten or, you know, whatever it is. I think you can do that.
I I just wanted to make sure, because if you, and I'm jumping ahead just a little bit.
Yes.
If you look at the definition of density on page twelve, or I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say it's definition. Page twelve. Under density B, it says, single-room occupancy units are not considered dwellings for the purposes of calculating density. So in my mind, that says you can have as many as you possibly can and and you can't limit it. Am I interpreting that right?
Yes, so, yes. So what that's referring to is, and I I should pull up the regulations for for density in the in the PD zone, because there's there's a couple of different limitations. One is you know, eight thousand square feet per dwelling. So that's that's sort of the standard density in in Trinidad. So you can't, so what that's saying is they're not dwellings for that one dwelling per eight thousand square feet. But I believe there's also a density limitation based on septic that would not that that would not apply to.
Okay, all right. Okay, that that's a that helps, yeah.
I guess I'm when we get to page twelve, I've got questions or thoughts on the single-room units, but am I to understand that these these single-room occupancies don't necessarily have to have access to sanitary and kitchen facilities, says may be provided. So in essence, it could be, for lack of a better example, a tough shed.
So there has to be, no, there there has to be.
Because I'm like looking at the definition on on page six, the new section you're adding, single- occupancy units. In which sanitary and kitchen facilities may be provided within the individual or shared within the facility.
Yes.
It's not clear to me that it has to be there the way that's written, or my reading that.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you look on page twelve, under the the development standards, so bathroom is three. It's not required, each one is not required to
Oh, there we go.
Have a full bathroom. But if one is not provided, common bathroom facilities shall be provided in accordance with the California Building Code for Congress residents with at least one full bathroom for every three units.
So in theory, is the single-room occupancy, if you were to build a building of them, in essence, we're talking building a dorm, for example, on campus housing in concept? Or I could take my house and turn it into a three-room, single occupancy facility because I have common sanitary and hygiene issues or services?
Yeah, I think you could, the the most common, the these are usually hotels converted.
Okay.
So that's that's where it comes from, but I I mean, I do think that one could be built from scratch.
And this is against specific just to transit, not necessarily transitional housing, but just affordable housing in essence.
Yeah.
And then where does this, to really complicate things, differ from the JADU, which is the room inside of a home that meets ticks a lot of these same boxes?
Yeah, because I don't think a JADU can have a shared bathroom.
Right. I wasn't, I I don't, you know, I it's a lot of fun.
Well, these, so I think a JADU, I think these can be even smaller than a JADU, but that that's a good question. They may, they may overlap. Although a JADU is allowed, we're gonna allow that. You know, you can have one in a house without going through a permit approval, where this requires city discretion to say, okay.
Which then, section A on page twelve, I know we jumped ahead a little bit, but starts getting into adjacency issues with the single-room occupancy, three hundred feet of another one. If two parcels next to each other, then how does I just things to think about and and pencil margins here, right? JADUs, are those adjacent? Triggers?
So, yeah, so either in the debt, so either we need to say here not including JADUs, or we differentiate them in the definitions.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good points.
You had a lot out of page six, I guess.
Well, let's see, where were we? We were on page 10?
12.
Well, we, we, we were trying to answer the question on page 10. So I'll move to 11. Anything on 11? 12 is our big one. Anything else on 12? 13? 14?
It was just back to 13, TP4 and TP5. The limiting in density, I think those things are all kind of been related, and we get some more detail on that. And then was your question on TP5? The zoning administrator, is that going to be the planning commission or not? And I feel like in previous discussions, we had talked about defining who the zoning administrator was. So I feel like we've referenced that in other work we've done.
Yeah, so at this point, it would be me. And so the the regulations, I copied this from you zoning administrator, but I'm, I'm asking if you want to see that plan as part of the use permit approval process. And then another common thing that I saw was that you had to have an onsite manager if you had more than 10 or so units. So I, I included that. But I also thought, well, maybe you want to limit it to no more than 10. And, you know, not, not even deal with that. So that's, that's an option. I, I think you can do that. So I do, I did pull up the density requirements for the the PD zone. So the PD zone is complicated because it's written. So planned developments traditionally are something, they're on large lots and you would, you would cluster your development in one area and leave the rest open. And so the regulations are written a little bit differently than for other lots in terms of density. So the way it's written now is the number of dwelling units, you have to get your net development area. And then when okay, so, so that was minimum lot size. So, so it's eight, so it's your net development area. So it's one unit for 8,000 square feet. So the single room occupancy units would not be limited to one per 8,000 square feet. And then it goes on to say, if septic tanks are the intended means of wastewater disposal, density shall be based on soil suitability and the requirements of the city's wastewater disposal regulations. So they can't be denser than what the septic system can handle.
Okay, well, and I, I, I'd like to leave it to planning commission to answer your question. I think at least until we understand more about how this is going to operate, it would make sense, I think, for to have some sort of insight into this kind of new development, something we haven't seen before. So that would be my comment on that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Anything else on 13?
And do you want to, do you want to limit the number or just see? I mean, I think as part of the use permit process, I think you could bring the number down if you think it's too much. But if you want to set a limit now.
Well, from what you just said about density and the fact that we still are required to meet all of the OWTS requirements, that in itself defines the maximum density at least. I guess the only question is, will we, we ever be in a position where we would have to worry about more than 10 at a time?
There, there could be the lot behind Murphy's. There's still a few decent sized parcels in town that, depending on how they were built, it could result in that.
And, and housing's moving towards mixed use. You know, with office space, housing, parking, restaurants. So it's going to be a mixed bag. There's going to be a lot on one site.
So we can limit it to 10, Trevor? How?
I think you could. It's, it's not dictated by the state that that you can't limit these.
Could we limit it to five? I mean, where does the, where's the 10? I'm just curious why that?
Oh, I just that's because a lot of the regulation, the, the regulations I looked at as models, they had higher standards and more requirements for those with more than 10 units or tw- sometimes it was 12. And fewer requirements for less than 10. So that's what I just thought of as a cutoff, but that's, it doesn't have to be 10.
I'd be inclined not to limit it and just, we can address it in the use permitting process if, if something seems out of hand, but.
But then if we were to take that approach, would we then be bound to the OWTS limitations as the max, or could we still come in below that? You know, let's say the septic could support 50 units. Could we still then come in under that with the?
Yeah, so let me, yeah, let me pull up the use permit findings real quick. So these findings are that the size and intensity contemplated at the proposed location will provide a development that's necessary or desirable for and compatible with the neighborhood and community. That such a use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of people nearby. And that ha- and that includes size, shape of structures, accessibility and traffic, persons, volume of traffic, off-street parking and loading, noise, dust, air, odor, landscaping. So I think that those, you know, provide you the discretion to say 20 is out of character with this neighborhood. And it'd be too much traffic and wha- whatever your findings are. Would make it, I mean, again, the affordable housing is usually subsidized to, to make it kind of pan out for developers. So you know, if a use permit gives a developer, you know, they could challenge or appeal you saying it's not compatible with the neighborhood and they could say it's, you know, that's not, you didn't have a basis to, to make that finding and they could challenge you in court over, over that as opposed to just saying 10. It would be easier to challenge. But again, the likelihood of someone coming in with a large development like that in Trinidad is so low. It's not a, it's not a big risk.
I guess I don't have a strong opinion either way.
Yeah. We'll get to see this again, right? I could noodle on it a little bit. I'm not sure one way or the other. I'd also like to just kind of absorb some of the information that you just gave us. So I'm willing to think about this and, and when we see it the next time, we can make a decision. Everyone, you okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Oh, let's see. Page 15.
I have a question on 14.
Sure.
What at the top, under mobile buildings? What is the MH combining zone?
Oh, good one.
We, we don't have any in the city. It's just, the ordinance is written, we could have one for like a mobile home park or something, but we don't. There might have originally been some designated outside the city. But it, that was meaningless. Because the city didn't have jurisdiction. So we don't, we don't have we don't have anything zoned that. Let's see, do we have?
So that would just be an area that's zoned for mobile homes.
Well, so it's a combining zone, so or an overlay zone, oh yeah, combining zone. So chapter 17.52. So basically, those are additional regulations in, in addition to the underlying zone. So a lot of communities use them. You know, like the, the county has a ton. A stream, there's like a stream protection overlay zone in areas with streams. There's a design review overlay zone in places where they require a design review. So but we don't, in Trinidad, we have provisions for allowing combining zones, but we don't, we've never actually designated any.
Okay. Thanks. And 16?
Uh, 15, I had something, just under section D. Surface with concrete, asphalted concrete, blah, blah, blah. Any interest in throwing semi-permeable as a first choice in there? So that's something we can put in there? Is that appropriate here? I don't, I don't really know, just less, less drainage issues if it's semi-permeable, goes right in where it should, right?
Wait, which one?
Section D, I assume this is talking about a parking lot?
So from under, under mobile buildings?
Yeah, just, I mean, I just feel like elsewhere, we've, we're, we talk about encouraging semi-permeable materials, concrete, that kind of stuff to encourage drainage.
Actually, this is on page seven, the page fifteen.
Oh, sorry, yeah, 15.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think we could.
Less pressure on the stormwater system, you know, just kind of assess there.
Well, I wonder if the operative word there is a parking facility for four or more vehicles. Obviously, you can do it, you know, we, we do it for less, but I don't see any reason why we can't do it for more.
Right.
No, I mean, it does say equivalent satisfactory to the city engineer. So I think as long as it's, you know, to engineering standards, they would accept that, but we could certainly add that.
I was just suggesting adding that kind of as a preferential treatment as opposed to asphalt.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a worthy thing to highlight.
What's the word, Aaron?
I, I think semi-permeable is what I've heard.
Permeable, semi-permeable, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I could add a sentence in there that would accomplish that.
Cool, thanks.
And I, and I don't think that would complicate the, the amendment any, so, yeah.
And they didn't use that when they put in the sidewalks.
And 16? Okay.
I, on 16, there's that, let's see, letter F. With regard to lighting. Can we remove that lighting requirement? Or is that something that people feel strongly about? I, I don't know, I'm not big on lit up parking lots too much, but.
So in essence, for us, that would be what, the Murphy's Market Park and Ride?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you can remove it.
Yeah, I think it's a public safety thing. I don't, I don't know that the city has ever told anybody, you need to light up your parking lot. That might be a bigger can of worms that we want to deal with, because lighting is, is a, is a significant issue. And I, it does need to be addressed in the city. And I don't know if that would open up
Sure.
more than we want to bite off right now.
And when they put in the new lights on Trinity, they talked about it and got the right kind so they wouldn't, you know, shine everywhere.
And I, I did drive through town at night the other day and, and those lights on Murphy's are pointed out and they are bright.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Okay, I don't believe that there's any public still with this, but I will ask if there's any public comment on this agenda item. All right, hearing none. I'll bring it back to the council, back to the commission. Trevor, yeah, you did say we'll see this again, so.
Yeah, we'll see this again. I think it sounds like you guys don't have major issues with this, so we should go ahead and pursue the amendment under the grant. So I will go ahead and just send out the notice because it has to, has to get to the coastal commission, I think, six weeks before it's actually adopted. So I'll just go ahead and do that. Doesn't have to be six weeks before your decision. It has to be six weeks before the, the city council, but I'll just go ahead and do that so we don't have to worry about timelines. And we'll have an official hearing at the next meeting. Not that this wasn't official, but.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, next agenda item or commissioner reports, any reports from commissioners? Okay, next item is staff reports.
Let's see, I, I think you're all aware that obviously Vanderpool wasn't on this agenda. So, so you'll probably be hearing from the neighbors and, and possibly them for the August agenda. Other than that, I, we, we have our LCP grant agreement. Haven't really jumped into that yet. We've got so many other grant tasks, but yeah, I think we're making good progress on SB2 and LEAP. We're starting, you know, doing some work on the, the OPC, starting the outreach on that. And I'll be starting the LCP update as, as time allows. And I think, I don't think I have anything, anything different to report at this point.
So Trevor, do we go to the city hall and get a paper on the Vanderpool project? Or do we call them to go check it or what?
Their plans, their current plans are available at city hall. I don't know if they have plans to redesign the project or if the delay was just because they couldn't get the story polls up. I, I don't know. I was hoping for a redesign, but I, I don't know. So I don't know if new plans will be forthcoming or not. But so the, the current plans are available at city hall if you want to look at them.
And they want us to come by, is that right?
Well, I think the neighbors want you to see the view impacts. And so they're, they're reaching out to you individually because I, you know, kind of gave them some warnings on, on Brown Act and that you guys couldn't, you know, all meet out there together without having it an agendized meeting so that they should contact you, you know, one at a time. And it's, it's perfectly fine for you to meet with the applicant and, and the neighbors and, and hear their viewpoints. And I think it would be beneficial to see the view impacts because you're, this is going to be, it's gonna, it's gonna be a tough decision. And so I do encourage you to do that. You just have to disclose it at, at the beginning of the hearing as ex parte communication and provide a little summary of, of what you talked about. And just, just be careful to, you don't want to make up your mind before the hearing because you won't have all the information.
And there's a possibility that the design will change.
Yeah.
So certainly more to come on that. Tom, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Then, I was kind of, I heard some ambiguity in regards to how, when the stakes would be going up and for how long they stay up. Is that, is there a policy?
That's, that's a, that's a question that has come up several times and unfortunately, we do not have. Oh, that was something we, we could consider adding that to our design review. oh, that was something, we, we could consider adding that to our design review. Um, that's right, I, I forgot, um, we could add requirements for story polls and set some guidelines as part of these design review criteria. Um, and I think that's not a bad idea, so let me make a note on that, um, so that after I talk with coastal commission staff, I will add story poll. So we have no requirement, um, for that now, um, but the planning commission has made it clear that they're not gonna approve a project with, without them. Um, the, the guidance we've usually provided is at least the weekend before the meeting. For this one, I've suggested longer, um, that, you know, if, if they could get it up by the time the notices go out, two weeks before the meeting, I think that would be ideal. Um, otherwise, I said the Friday before the meeting, because that's when the packets go out. Um, is, is the minimum time that they should have, have that up.
So where would you put story polls, under viewed?
Yeah, so they should, you know, I don't know, however they mount them, um, you know, whatever works, but it's supposed to show the outline of the proposed additions. So which is, which would be on the west side as well.
Okay.
Second story in the middle.
Okay, um, future agenda items, anything new on that, Trevor?
No, I think we'll get to a number of these things as part of the, the big zoning ordinance update. We'll get to a number of these things. Um, the TRI management team has been meeting regularly again. Uh, the city's website is a disaster.
It is.
I believe it was in Russian at some point last week, I heard.
I mean, when it just said an error message was better than now, because I, people are clicking on it and wondering why it's not working, um. And then there's some money left over in the stormwater grant, and there was originally like a demonstration, rainwater catchment, and so I think the city's gonna be looking at putting in a tank at the school. The school's really interested in having a rainwater tank for their garden, and so I think, uh, the, the stormwater grant might pay for that as a demonstration project, so people can see what a, you know, five thousand or whatever gallon tank it will be.
Well, Cal Poly Humboldt built one. I, I still have the newspaper article on that. So maybe I'll take it to the city and have Anton make a couple of copies, and I'll volunteer to have one at my house.
And I think you, you have the room for it, Diane, not everybody does.
Yeah, I do have the room.
All right, anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah, one more thing. What about the, uh, tree at the school? We got a month and the school's gonna open. And the tree is still a little bit in front of the sign. It's not a big deal, but it needs to be clear, you know? And I just, I mean, I could call her. I haven't called her for a couple of months, and I'll say, hey, schools get, you're getting ready to go. Um, where are the landscapers? They need to prune it back a little so we can get, you know, all the information. I like the sign, I actually do. I think it's, um, it's okay where it is and it's readable, but the, the tree's still, the agreement was that it was gonna be pruned.
Well, that was a, um, uh, uh, um, an item of condition of approval.
Was a condition, yeah, and they're supposed to come back to you too with, um, after six months or something too, so, um. Yeah, probably, probably some, summer's a tough time, and then, you know, some people don't prune in the spring because of nesting season or whatever, so, and we're still in nesting season. Um, but yeah, I, I saw it for the first time today, it was, you know, smaller than I thought it was gonna be, and the tree blocks it more than I thought it would.
In that one corner, you know, it does, so, I'll give her a call this week and say, hey, what's up? Where's the, where's the landscaper? Or do I need to bring my pole pruner? Thank you.
That would get them going.
Yep.
Any final thoughts, considerations? Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. Another very productive evening, appreciate it. Thank you, Trevor. Lots of really good stuff this, uh, this, this evening. So, thank you all, and.
Okay, enjoy summer, everyone. Bye-bye.
Hi, everybody. Good night.